Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday morning Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Board meeting. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchon. I am the Chair of the Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman. On my right, fellow Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Commissioner Bill Avery. Commissioner Deb Shore is on vacation this week, so she will not be joining us this morning. From the County Clerk's office, we have the County Clerk Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren. From the County Attorney's Office, we have David Durbin. And from the County Board Office, we have our Chief Deputy Administrative Officer Anne Ames. Now, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
The copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. A gen nine, one or minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday, September 5th. Any discussion or corrections?
Hearing now, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Upstein.
Wilchon?
Upstein.
Motion carries two yes, two abstention. Next is approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Thursday, September 7th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held last Thursday, September 7th. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims approval of all claims processed through September 12th, 2017.
Move approval of claims.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through September 12th. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a public hearing. This is for County Special Permit Number 17027, a community unit plan for five single-family lots with a waiver of subdivision regulations of one test well per 10 acres at Southwest 98th Street, one half-mile south of West Yankee Hill Road.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for the County Special Permit Number 17027. Anyone in the audience wishing to testify in support?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jim Lures, and I'm one of the owners of Tallgrass Hills LLC.
I'm going to swear you in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Again, my name is Jim Lures, one of the owners of Tallgrass Hills LLC, which is the applicant in this particular special permit. I became aware of this property probably 20-some years ago. I was doing some legal work for the original owner, and he allowed me to hunt the property and train my dog out there, and I've been stomping around out there for 20-some years. It's a beautiful area. I originally was approached by the original owner to see if I still had any interest in the land, and I said I'd like to buy 40 acres, and they said, "Well, we want to keep it to an 80." And so I had to find a partner, and I did, and we bought the 80 acres. I originally wanted to put six lots out there, but the planning staff convinced me that that would also require a change of zone to ag or to residential or AGR, and I didn't want 20-some houses out there, so I didn't like that either. So with the help of the planning staff and my engineer, we came up with a plan for six lots out there on this 80 acres through a community unit plan, which, as you know, requires that 70% of that property remains undisturbed. So out of the original land, which has been, most of it's been in CRP for 20, 30 years, out of that 40 acres of CRP, 35, or, excuse me, 45 acres of CRP, 35 is going to pretty much remain in CRP. All the trees and the hills are going to virtually remain the same and untouched. Out of the original 25 acres of cropland, we're going to have still about 15 acres of cropland. So it's going to be five acres. I'm trying to convince my, or three acre lots and two five acre lots, trying to convince my daughter and her family in Ohio to come back and build on one of them. I'd like to build on one. I named the road Noah Lane after my little grandson who passed away a year ago at seven months old, so I have a personal interest in this property, and I intend to take good care of it, and just simply would ask you to approve the special permit.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lures? Okay. I'm sorry to hear about your grandson.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Anyone else here to testify in support? Anyone here to testify in opposition? In neutral capacity. Tom, are you able to speak? I have a couple of questions for planning. Would you be able to answer them?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Why, you do?
So, planning, I assume, has been working closely with the developer on this?
Yes. I can show it to you.
So is there any concern on behalf of planning?
No, we're in support of the application.
Okay. Commissioner Avery?
What is the reason for waiving the one test well for 10 acres?
In the subdivision ordinance, it talks about that you drill one test well for every 10 acres on a grid pattern where the lots are going to go. They did drill one test well per code. They would have been required to drill one additional test well. It's been common practice over the years that we have taken information based on other wells in the area, and look, health departments, the one that reviews that information, and kind of makes a determination based on the information provided, if they feel there's adequate water quality and quantity in the area. So the applicant did submit information from wells in the surrounding area, and in addition to that, they submitted a letter from Mosier Well Drilling. I'm sure many of you know him. He's been around for a long, long time, and it was his opinion stated in the letter, that's part of your packet, that there was water quantity and quality was not a problem in this area.
That's generally true for South Lancaster, but not necessarily Northwest.
Yeah, I think it's the Northwest area of the county that has more issues with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for planning? Okay, thank you so much. Seeing no one else here to testify in support in the neutral or in the opposition, I'll close the public hearing for the County Special Permit Number 17027.
Next is number four, new business. For A, is a resolution in matter of County Special Permit Number 17027, community unit plan on property general located at Southwest 98th Street and West Yankee Hill Road, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the County Special Permit Number 17027. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. For B, is a resolution directing the County Treasurer to issue tax sale certificates to the county on all parcels of real estate where there are delinquent taxes, and also directing the County Attorney's Office to begin tax foreclosure proceedings.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to direct the County Treasurer to issue tax sale certificates on parcels of real estate where there are delinquent taxes, there are delinquent taxes, and also directing the County Attorney's Office to begin tax foreclosure proceedings. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is a special designated license application from World Eats Company doing business as Edry for reception at Prairie Creek Inn, 2400 South 148th Street, Walton, on September 30th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special designated license application from World Eats Company for reception at Prairie Creek Inn on September 30th. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. D is a special designated license application for Myers Wine, Inc. for reception at Spring Creek Prairie, 11,700 Southwest 100th Street in Denton on October 1st, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special designated license application from Myers Wine, Inc. for reception at the Spring Creek Prairie on October 1st. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four E is a special designated license application for Myers Wine, Inc. for reception at Prairie Creek Inn, 2400 South 148th Street, Walton, on October 6th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special designated license application from Myers Wine, Inc. for reception at Prairie Creek Inn on October 6th. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is authorization to bind insurance coverage.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the binding of insurance coverage. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four G is an agreement between the Nebraska State Patrol and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff for use of the County Firearms Range for training and qualification testing. Term of the agreement is for five years.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Nebraska State Patrol for the use of the County Firearms Range for training and qualification testing. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H is ratification of grant adjustment notice from NEMA to Lancaster County decreasing the amount of the 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant from $128,014.50 to $127,901.58.
Good morning, Jim David Saber, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. Agenda item H is a companion to Agenda item I, so I just wanted to briefly explain that. H is actually a reduction of $112.92. When we participate in the EMPG program, there's an application, there's quarterly reports and other documentation that's required to be submitted with that. I try to estimate as accurately as possible what we can recoup costs for. Primarily, that first go-around is for salaries and benefits of our three staff. So due to some changes in healthcare costs, things along those lines, my estimate actually came in just $113 over the initial estimate. So we had to return $113 on the front end, but then if I can jump ahead to Agenda item I, that $113 goes back into a general fund. It's federal money administered by the state at the local level. So all the counties in the state that participate in this EMPG program, if they have any unused money initially, it goes into that reallocation pool. So we were able to successfully petition for that reallocation, and that's what Agenda item I touches on. We were able to secure an additional $47,659.87 as a reallocation. So I hope I'm not out of order by addressing two Agenda items at once, but briefly, that's an explanation of the process.
We appreciate that explanation. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. David Saber?
Thank you.
Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Move approval of H.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to ratify the grant adjustment notice from NEMA, decreasing the amount of the 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. I is a grant adjustment notice from NEMA to Lancaster County increasing the amount of the 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant from $127,901.58 to $175,561.45.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to ratify the grant adjustment notice from the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency, increasing the amount of the 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four J is a contract with the Clark Anderson Partners to provide design and construction observation services for the repair of the storm sewer and drainage ditch at the Lancaster County Adult Detention Facility. The cost of the county is not to exceed $5,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Clark Anderson Partners to provide design and construction services at the Lancaster County Adult Detention Facility. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. K is an engagement letter from Baylor Evan to provide professional legal services to Lancaster County.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the engagement letter from Baylor Evan to provide legal services to the county. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. L is a network provider contract with the Regional Behavioral Health Authority for the provision of certain behavioral mental health services at the Mental Health Crisis Center. The county should be reimbursed up to $1,172,103 for the services. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the network provider contract with the Regional Behavioral Health Authority, also known as Region 5, for the provision of certain payroll mental health services at the Mental Health Crisis Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four M is a business associate and qualified service organization agreement between Region 5 Systems and Lancaster County on behalf of the Mental Health Crisis Center to ensure compliance with the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act and 42 CFR Part 2. The agreement is made part of the network provider contract between Region 5 and Lancaster County.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the business associate and qualified service organization agreement with Region 5 Systems to ensure compliance with the Health Insurance Portability Act and 42 CFR Part 2. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. N is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department and Lancaster County Corrections to award a contract to Galls LLC and Don's Pioneer Uniforms for the annual supply of garden maintenance staff clothing for county corrections. The estimated four-year total for Galls LLC is $90,000, and Don's Pioneer Uniforms is $30,000 for a total cost for the four-year term of $120,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Galls LLC and Don's Pioneer Uniform for the annual supply of garden maintenance staff clothing for county corrections. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. O is a contract with TLC Dry Cleaners to provide the annual service of uniform cleaning. Term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. The cost of the county is not to exceed $13,650.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with TLC Dry Cleaners to provide the annual service of uniform cleaning. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. P is amendment to County Contract C-14-454 with Odyssey Travel for the annual requirements of travel agent services. The amendment renews the contract from September 9th, 2017 through September 8th, 2018. The cost of the county is not to exceed $9,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Odyssey Travel for the annual requirements of travel agent services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four Q is an amendment to County Contract C-16-498 with Paramount Linen for the annual services of rental and cleaning of mats, various linens, and related items. The amendment renews the contract from September 13th, 2017 through September 12th, 2018. The cost of the county is not to exceed $8,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Paramount Linen for the annual services of rental and cleaning of mats, various linens, and related items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. R is professional service contract between Olson Associates and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Engineers' Office to provide wetland report and permitting for the county's 2018 culvert and main culvert maintenance project. Work is to be completed on or before January 1st, 2018. The cost of the county is not to exceed $14,800.
I'm a Lancaster County engineer, so this is our annual contract to do Army Corps of Engineers and floodplain permits for our pipes, our pipe program for the construction next spring.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the professional service contract with Olson and Associates to provide wetland report and permitting for the county's 2018 culvert maintenance project. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four S are contracts with the following medical providers for specialized medical care of general systems clients. Providers will reimburse at the Medicaid rate, and this includes Heartland Urgent Care, Hybel Dermatology, and Bradley Navotny, DCPC.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve three contracts with medical providers for specialized medical care of general systems clients. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. T is a grant contract amendment with the Mediation Center to increase the amount of the contract to $21,461 for the Victim Youth Conferences program. The contract is funded by the Nebraska Mission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Community Aid Grant Number 16 CB-523.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This grant contract is cleanup again from that community aid grant that ended on June 30th of this year. Again, we reached out to our agencies to see if any of them had difficulty making payroll or expenses that weren't covered, and the mediation center was one of them. We covered a couple expenses in this contract. One was the extra number of referrals that they received from our office for juvenile diversion, and then they also had mediations that they facilitated at the request of juvenile court that were not compensated. So we were able to help them with that.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with the Mediation Center to increase the amount of contract for the Victim Youth Conference program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. U is a grant contract with Lighthouse, Inc. in amount of $28,891 for the restorative justice program through the Nebraska, through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid, Aid Grant. Term of the grant contract is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Bill Mitchner. I'm the Executive Director of Lighthouse. So I just want to talk a little bit about what we're doing with this and the whole idea behind why we want and think this is an appropriate thing. So over the years, we've seen a lot of missteps when it comes to young people and when we're very punitive and that kind of stuff. So when restorative justice was brought to my attention, we thought it was a great idea not only to use the restorative justice model, which really is identifying harm that's caused, whether it be to a community or a person or whatever it might be, and then working with that young person to start healing and look at different options of ways to make their decisions better in the future. And so through this, we've partnered with LPS, diversion, community members, and of course, in our own facility, we want our young people to learn as well. And then recently, we are now an OSS site, so an alternative to suspension instead of just going home and stuff like that. So then, one of the main focuses of this program in OSS is to do the restorative circles as well.
Commissioner Amundson?
Now, I think that this is a great program. Now, isn't my understanding that the home builders of Lincoln also work with this program?
Not directly with this program. You mean with Lighthouse itself?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Home Builders Association of Lincoln, yes.
Because they were talking about how, last night I was at a dinner where they were talking about how they were working with youth, and one of the, one of the members of the Board of Directors was explaining about how he worked with these youth, teaching them how to paint and do some various other things, and I think this is a great, great program.
Thank you. It is definitely, and we appreciate that piece as well because, again, we're giving alternatives for our young people and showing them what's out there and possible.
And it's also learning skills that they could possibly initiate in other ways.
That's correct.
Commissioner Brinkman?
With the out-of-school suspension program, do you work only with the high schools where you're already working, or is it any kids?
Well, right now, it's, it's kind of in the beginning stages, piloting, and currently we're working directly with one school. However, it looks and appears that we're going to be expanding that to four schools this year. Of course, we're hoping that it'll be all middle and high schools next year.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Mitchner?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Lighthouses, Inc. for the restorative justice program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid Grant. Any discussions? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. V is a grant contract with University of Nebraska-Lincoln on behalf of the Center on Children, Families, and the Law in amount of $5,000. The grant contract is funded through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid Grant. The term of the grant contract is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. And this is a grant that allows us to fund an evaluation for our Operation Tipping Point program, which is through the gang unit with LPD.
Any questions for Ms. Wil?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the University of Nebraska-Lincoln on behalf of the children, the Center on Children, Families, and the Law. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number five are consent items. This includes utility permit number 1591, Alliance Windstream Nebraska, Inc., install new buried cable to clear conflicts with Box Culvert H 128. There is no cost to the county. Receive and place on file the following reports for August 2017, Assessor Registered Deeds, Cleared District Court, Records, and Information Management.
Move approval of consent items. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on items not related to, related to county business not on the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please continue the agenda.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, September 14th, 2017 due to their attendance at the Nebraska Association of County Officials Southeast District Meeting at Camp Carol Joy Holling in Ashland, Nebraska. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, September 19th, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with Board of Equalization immediately following. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 26th, 2017 at 4:00 p.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding the Board of Equalization Property Evaluation Protest Process. The county commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. We will now start the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, September 12th. Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material will be discussed at today's open meetings available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also, our attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the county assessor's office. Agenda item one, our minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, August 15th, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, August 15th. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is notice of disqualification from special valuation. This is for Martin Neal.
Good morning, Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor Registered Deeds. Our recommendation remains to disqualify this property from qualifying for green belt. There is a small portion of ag use. It's an incidental use on this parcel, probably roughly a third of an acre. Primary use of the parcel is still for residential homesite purposes and statute requirement, as the county attorney shared with you, is that primary use of the parcel needs to be for ag land purposes for it to qualify for ag land or to qualify for green belt. So our recommendation is still denial.
Okay, Commissioner Amundson has a question.
I do have a question, though, because I was looking at the amount of production that they have here, and I understand that what it is you're saying. However, this, this was submitted in February 15th, and of 2017, it was received. And so I'm really actually wondering if the person who went out there to look at that could really make a determination of...
Tim Seelock from our office was out there. I've got photographs from his visit of the corn. And we're recognizing there is, it's basically what I would call a large garden, and there's, there's some crops being raised, some chickens. But again, the point from our purpose is it's an incidental use in the grand scheme of things. It's less than a third, a third of an acre on a four and a half acre plot that's laid out clearly for residential use. To take that to the extreme, every garden in the city of Lincoln could qualify for ag land.
I understand that. Okay, I just was looking because I was thinking that there are, there is quite a lot of production, and he does sell it. So...
Any other questions for Mr. Gaines?
Move approval of the notice of disqualification.
It's kind of, I don't know how the terminology is. We've disqualified it. He's appealed that disqualification, so I mean, I guess you, you're maybe going to uphold the disqualification.
We would affirm the notice of disqualification from special green belt valuation. That would be the motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to affirm the notice of disqualification from special green bay, green belt valuation. Any discuss, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Will abstain because I do know Martin Neal, so...
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three S, one abstention. Number four is notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes, and this is for Benjamin and Kimberly Pear.
We are recommending approval of this notice. This was a clerical error when the, during the preliminary hearing process, the taxpayer came in. We agreed adjustment was needed, and we simply made it to 159,000 rather than 259,000. Taxpayer brought it to our attention and requested the correction, and we certainly want to get this one right. And so this notice will give them notice of 259,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to affirm the notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes. Any discussion? So just let me get this straight that this property taxpayer came forward and said that
They recognized...
His property was undervalued, 100,000?
They recognized the error. We had the initial discussion during the preliminary process. The adjustment was intended to be to 259. We erroneously put it at 159. Taxpayer recognized this, brought it to our attentions. This is to fix it, and there's a 30-day window to appeal as well.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.[1653.42]